We will open the meeting with Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the Republic of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we start off the meeting with public comments. I invited Jenny Zaler, our animal control officer, to speak first today. She sent me a text earlier today about something that happened on Real Point. So you come on forward and just let us know.
Like Amber said, I'm Jenny Zaler, I'm animal control officer. So Sunday night I got a call about a dead bottlenose dolphin at the end of Real Point. And so it was Kenny who called me, Kenny Lewis, and he said, so what do you want me to do? Do you want people to ask me that? So I called New York Marine Rescue Center, and they said they were going to send a scientist out to do a necropsy. So they sent a scientist in the morning. Brett Page and Dave Clark went out to Real Point, went out to the end of Real Point, and brought the dead dolphin back to the Highway Department, which was great. The scientist said usually she just has to do necropsies wherever they lay. And then after we did everything, which took a few hours, it was really interesting. I learned a lot. Then Wench LaBrosse and Jared Hamilton were there, and they said, oh, do you want us to get a weight on it? And the scientist is like, you do that? And I'm like, yeah. So they took it across the scales. It was good that we got the weight. You know, the more info you get, the better. You never know when you're collecting information if it's going to help today or in 10 years. And then Kenny came over, introduced himself to the scientists, like, did she need anything else? And they reached out to me this morning, the New York Marine Rescue Center, just saying how impressed they were of Shelter Island and how everybody was so helpful. And just wanted to say thanks. And if anybody sees anything like that in the future, let me know so that we can do this again. If we collect the information, then the death isn't wasted, you know? Thank you.
Was it the gray one or the black and white?
Bottlenose. It was in such a state of decomposition, so mostly black at that point.
What other kinds of animal rescues do you do, since this is an unusual one, but I think in your day-to-day?
Oh, well, so we've done--
Here.
We've done other things with New York Marine Rescue Center, mostly stranded sea turtles. And the public's great about calling you for that stuff. I'm just thinking you're the best people right here. People care. Otherwise, I wouldn't have a job. We get a couple of sea turtles a year. A few years ago, I went to the Release, which was really excellent. That was on the ocean, Tom Cog Beach, wherever that is. Oh, islands, by far. But that was really cool. They put all these trackers on them, and then they have a map on their website so you can actually see where all the turtles are going, which I find really exciting. That makes it fun.
And then there's the usual stray cats and dogs that-- got your different neighborhood peeps that you text and say, have you seen?
Right. Yeah, the frequent flyers and all that, dogs feed dogs, that kind of thing, yeah. But this was special, so just again, if anybody sees anything, do never bother me.
Thank you. Sea turtles tend to happen more when the weather turns cold, right?
Yeah, they get cold times. So yeah, definitely call me. I'm at Riverhead. Always fun.
Sounds good. Good. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Is there anyone in the physical audience who has any-- Bert, come on up.
I'm first wave. I do a favor. So I listened to the town about the library site plan review. And the library, you know, got caught in preparing their presentation for their building, and then the town changed the code after they, you know, initiated their whole program, got their funding. And I'd like to see the town board accept them from this site plan review. And just to have the town board review it and let them get on with the building of the library. I think that, you know, we've seen the fire department build their building that didn't have site plan review. We've seen other adjustments in the town code for different plots of land, turning residential or zoning into business zoning. And I think it's something that you're capable of doing. Ask the lawyer if you could exempt it. And I think that would, you know, save the library thousands of dollars. I think, you know, Ben would have proven you don't have to go through-- I'm not supposed to, but you know, you don't have to. He doesn't have to go with the environmental consultant that he doesn't particularly care for or wants to see an option. And I'd say just move on. You know, they're going to stay within their property. They've got many professionals outside services going on. And I think it's redundant for the town and for the library. I think that you should exempt them. And it was overwhelmingly approved by the town. And I don't think if there's, I don't think there's really a town consensus or whatever to stop it or to slow it down. And then on docs, I know that there's--
There'll be a public hearing on that on Monday.
On Monday, so--
So that's when you should come--
Oh, that's what I said, okay. All right, and-- Oh, zoning board approved-- zoning board? Can I talk about fencing?
It's a separate board.
Separate board.
So their decisions are their decisions. We don't have any influence over that. So unless--
Never comes to you at all?
No. And the public hearing's still open on that. Yeah, so you can definitely come to the next meeting and--
Okay, perfect. Thanks.
Just to touch on the library a little bit, I think having site plan review on-- you know, on other, you know, like, it didn't exist at the time for the fire district when that building was raised. I feel like it's a good thing. And I don't think that we're holding up the library. They still have to get their health department approvals. So hopefully that we are expediting the process on behalf of the library. So hopefully by the time we get through that expedited process, we're setting, you know, special public hearings and asking boards to meet twice if necessary. By the time we get done with our process, hopefully that will coincide with the health department approvals so that it will all dovetail, so they'll be able to proceed. So at the moment, we are not holding them up. There's other, you know, things going on besides site plan review, right? Before they can, you know, break ground on everything. Although I believe that they're going to be able to start some demolition ahead of getting site plan review and that department's approval. So there will be forward motion. So I just wanted to put that out there. Anybody else in the physical audience that wants to say anything? Anyone on Zoom? Okay.
Did you want-- Need to talk about--
Ken, so you don't-- well, you were going to stay for part of the meeting anyways, so--
Yeah, well--
Yeah, we'll wait for the board reports. Yeah, we have a very quick agenda. Benjamin is away with the-- brain dead--
E.T.
E.T. grant, working with those people. So we're short a board member today, so we kept it light purposefully. So we'll start off. You need to leave for the WQI rebate. We're not making any decisions. We just started discussing. Presumably, we can just let Benjamin know this is the WQI rebate for Eddie.
Yes.
15 South Midway Road.
It's a-- Yeah.
It was a straightforward--
The owner was installing a Sen 7 when a Sen 5 was sufficient for the house. So the WQI proposed the $12,000 grant to pay for the Sen 5. And the difference between the costs, the owner will bear. And it was a 4-0 to approve.
Yeah. Yeah. So I think we can go ahead and put that resolution on for Monday to approve that. Then they can come back. The next item on the agenda is the outdoor assembly permit for the 5K. I saw, I thought I saw Mary Ellen. It's on the-- Let's drop it. We did receive letters of approval from Ken and Highway and from the police department. They're prepared to handle the event. They don't have any concerns. Yeah, just-- Just to pull up the application quickly here. Same layout.
Yeah, it's the same.
Yes. Yeah, so it's going to be Saturday, October 19th at 11:00 a.m. They're not going to use any permanent markings on the roads. They'll leave the course of the roads as they found them. Proceeds benefit Norfolk breast cancer health coalition, the Coalition for Women's Cancer at Southampton Hospital, and Lucia's Angels or Lutia's Angels. I'm not sure if that's announced. And she says the 25th. Expected maximum number of people on the property is 600 with 100 automobiles. Setup is Friday, October 18th from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. The event is Saturday from 8:00 to 1:00 p.m. Cleanup from 12:00 to 1:00. Yeah, so it's the usual, and it seems to go off every year without a hitch. There are a few roads that will be shut down during the event, just immediately adjacent to, but that's the same thing that they did last year, and they're very good about opening them up as--
What is the number on this event now? How many years have we done it?
24 years.
24 years, yeah.
I think we can put that on for resolution on Monday. Any questions from the public on this event? Okay. Then we will move on to the next agenda item, which is the-- A couple of weeks ago, we had a presentation by the chief on West Neck Road and Worthy Way intersections. I'm going to come back. I'm locking back in now. So much for a short meeting.
I know.
All right, we good?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we will carry on now. Sorry about the interruption. And Community Housing Board, we are going to look to finalize the request for proposal. I have been doing budget upon budget upon budget review, so I do not get to spend the time on this that I would have liked to spend a couple of minutes. I don't know about the two of you.
I have a few things that I want to just go over with the building department, just a little--
Yep.
Just a couple of few things. So just a little more time would be good.
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah, I still have, like, I haven't gotten, been able to circle back on my Wicks law question, design-build concerns, and then also opened up the bid package to, you know, look over that for completeness. So, yeah, I think more time.
I had a question about the chain of command from the site. Community Housing Board, Town Board, is there going to be project manager?
I have the same question, Albert. I think we need to--
Yeah, I mean, we really, somebody that's--
Yes, we do. We need a--
Committed, devoted to the-- Yeah, we need that, okay.
Yeah, that's on my list of consider hiring a professional to--
And then the only other question I had was, I don't know if they included, there's detailed plans and specs that are going to be bid on, part of the package? Okay.
That's what I'm discussing with the building department, yeah.
I'm sorry?
That's what I have to talk to the building department about, yes.
Oh, okay. All right.
We reset those a week or a week and a half ago? I can't remember. I know they're in my inbox.
There are basic plans in your inbox, but there are certain additions that the building department--
Okay, that's what I just-- Okay.
Okay, so we will table this for another day. So that leads us to board member reports. If we didn't have our little technical hiccup, we'd just be flying through this meeting. I can start. Ken, why don't you come up and just tell us about what you're doing at the Goody Pile?
My pleasure. Ken Lewis, Highway Superintendent. So just, we started putting it, Christine put on the website today, I believe. Having the road sign put out by the police. But on Thursday this week, the 3rd, we're going to be closing the Goody Pile just for the day. Starting a project Wednesday night. After it closes at 4 o'clock, we're going to start emptying it out, putting everything off the side in a secure spot while we prep the inside of the area for-- and power and pressure wash everything and scrape the-- prep the two sides of the containers that we use in there. And then we're going to let it dry overnight, and then we're going to paint the inside, those container walls that are on the inside of the facility first thing Thursday morning. And then we're going to install all new shelving that is currently being built right now by my maintenance crew. So we're going to have shelving that lines both sides of the containers, the full length. There's going to be two rows of shelving, two feet, two foot wide, solid wooden shelves the whole way that won't allow things to fall through, trying to keep as many things off the ground as possible. We're even building an area that'll be in the middle on the walls. It's going to be a clothing rack that's completely enclosed, almost like an anorak would be with a pole that people can hang clothes on, with two shelves for shoes underneath it as well. So when people come in there. So, yeah, we're hoping that we'll get everything done and we'll be able to be back and open at, by 10 o'clock the next day on Friday. And so I just ask for everybody's cooperation and patience with this. I think it's going to be a very noticeable and, you know, important improvement to the area. And we're also, I'm hoping that once that's completed, then I'm going to work on how we're going to open up the new area that I've started to put sort of seed parcels in of larger furniture pieces, construction, clean construction, pieces of wood, et cetera, plumbing, whatever we can find in there. And then my plan is that that'll be open during the same times that the Goody Pile is open right now on those days. I've also, just as another thing, this won't happen this week because we just ordered it, but I've ordered a new roof for the building. It's not the, it's got the framing in existence. It had sort of a tarpaulin type roof on top. So the last time it was put in, I think it was 12 years ago, and it's starting to-- it's deteriorating in some spots. It's leaking. So I contacted the company. They're sending us a replacement. Once that comes, we'll put that into place as well. So, yeah, so I think things are moving in a good direction there. And so saying that, all right?
Thank you. Something that I know we've been getting questions and calls on is about COVID tests, whether or not we as a town, we're going to get any more. Right now, I'm not aware of any, and Judy is checking into it, any from the county, which is where we normally get our COVID tests from, coming in to us. However, the federal government has put out a new program where you can order free, for free tests. You can just go online or there's phone calls. So I'll give the information to Christine, and we'll put it out on the website so that at a minimum, people can get those ones, the free ones, from the federal government, since we don't have an option for them at the moment. Shred Day is coming up on October 12th, 9 until 1:00 p.m., I believe. I'll mention it again next week. That's in a week and a half. And then as far as meetings last week, through the opioid grant that we got from the county, there was a program at the school last week. It was for grades six through eight. It was a program during the school day, and then also high school kids. And they were modified, the programs were modified just a little bit depending on the age group. And then there was one for the parents and community in the evening, which is the one that I went to. And it was just how to support the young people in your lives. And there's some, like, really good pointers that were in there and how social media is influencing kids to, you know, try and make drugs cool and so how to combat against that. And there's going to be another program with a speaker October 25th and also November 13th. And as we get closer, we'll put that out on the website as well as social media. But it was a very good program. Jackie Canavaglio is involved with HUGS, and she put on the program. It's good. Probably about 25 people there. That's all that I have.
I had a meeting on Friday with the Health and Wellness Alliance, and we've been discussing whether or not they want to become a formal town committee. And at that meeting, everyone kind of decided that, yes, they did want to try to move forward and become a formal committee. So we're going to have another meeting in October to kind of sort out the details, but they're looking to do maybe six meetings a year. And it will help them kind of organize their events, but also help us, the town, figure out what services our community needs and is lacking. So I think there'll be a very good bridge between the town board and the community. So they're going to put together a mission statement for us and let us know exactly what their goals are going to be. And they already kind of have a mission statement that they're working with. They started during COVID because there was a big need during COVID for people to get support with mental health needs and just to help act as a liaison between other agencies that could provide assistance to people. So now they would like to try to become a little more formal to see how they can help us as, you know, town government and the senior center provide more robust services for people.
I know Nancy Green at the Presbyterian Church said of it, she said that there's a need for somebody to--
Kind of be a coordinator.
Coordinator of, okay. Is there any that's--
They're going to help us try to move in that direction.
Okay, all right.
So part of why we talked about them becoming an official committee is so that we can have, you know, the ability to look for grants to help build a position like that, kind of a liaison to all the different organizations that are around us that can help people. So they're going to help try to put together a vision of what that could look like and what that job description could be and kind of how we would need somebody to fill that. So I think they'll be beneficial. I think it'll be, it's a needed niche that we haven't really been looking at.
Yeah.
So I think it'll be, it'll be a good thing. But I'll have more information in October after our next meeting. They're still trying to determine how many people would be on the committee and, you know, if they want to advertise for specific skill sets that they might be lacking as a group. So we'll see.
I don't have anything.
Good. All right, then we will adjourn the work session and go into a special meeting to-- Oh, where's Amber? We need her. You just knocked on the door. Are you calling her, Christina?
Oh, I do have one more thing. There was supposed to be a Friday night dialogue at Mashamick about septic grant. And so that's been canceled. So I will still find a way to get the information out to the public, but we just won't be able to do it on Friday.
At 5:30 today, Mashamick is having something at the Visitor Center about burning that they're looking to do. So I want to attend that because I thought we weren't allowed to do burning.
Well, they were very hard to get a permit approval--
I'm curious to understand that.
Very interesting, yes.
That's at 5:30 at the Visitor Center. All right, so moving on to budget. I don't know if Amber has-- Okay, yeah, I don't know if we have to sign-- We have a special meeting-- A special meeting waiver, but she'll give us that. But anyways, so we have-- Oh, here she is. Do we have a special waiver we have to sign? Do we need to make a motion for the session? Or we just-- Well, you should, well-- All right, I made a motion. We adjourned the work session.
Okay, so you adjourned.
We opened the special meeting.
Okay.
Yes. Yes. So we have the tentative budget for 2025. The town clerk's office will have it if people want to pick up paper copies. And it will also be online for those--
Remember, I have your pencil. I just have a pencil.
For those who would like to look at it in detail. And we will have a public hearing the day after election day. It was on November 2nd, I believe. I didn't put on the calendar. And we also have budget work sessions set up. But I will read my opening letter on this that has been distributed to all of you and will go with the budget package. So attached to 09, the budget, the tentative budget for 2025. I was hoping to present a more palatable tax increase, but the numbers did not work out that way. The tentative budget increase is 10.2% currently. There's clearly more work to be done and some tough decisions that we as a board are going to have to make. I met with department heads and committee chairs to understand their needs and wants for the coming year as well as projections for revenues. The office staff worked with me to calculate amounts for employees, for members of collective bargaining units, non-union employees, general and health, general and health insurance, retirement and employee benefits, and payroll tax costs. The biggest component of the town budget are personnel costs. Personal services, which is just the, you know, salaries that are paid to employees, totals in this budget, $7,488,000, which is 42% of total appropriations. Personal services increased by 7% this year, which accounts for 4.2% of the tentative increase. The payroll increases in the 2025 budget are consumer price increase for non-union employees of 3.7%, a 2.4% negotiated increase for the police union that was settled last year, and a 3% negotiated increase for the highway union, which was also settled last year. Non-union employees did not get the same increases as union employees in 2024 and therefore are in at a higher rate in an attempt to keep them at the same earning rate, adjusted for inflation over the past few years. As for new hires in the budget, there was a police officer hired in late 2024 due to the timing of the police academy starting and the lead time needed to train up ahead of potential retirements and/or expanded night coverage. There was an expanded position in the nutrition program. A part-time cook was converted to full-time in 2024. They were not in the 2024, they were not, these were not in the 2024 budget originally. In 2025, the building department will see two employees increase their hours from 35 to 40 hours per week. And the zoning board of appeals asks for more compensation to reflect the rule of home size variances from the town board's special permit application process to zoning variances. The positions that were not funded though requested were a part-time assessor, a town clerk archivist, an additional half day for the social worker, and an increase from part-time to full-time for the code enforcement slash building inspector. A part-time clerk in Highway was eliminated. Employee benefit costs are also a large part of the budget. These encompass retirement, health insurance, payroll taxes, and insurances. These costs total $4,857,000, which is 27% of total appropriations. So between salaries and employee benefit costs, that accounts for 69% of our budget. Just to sort of put out there, like, where we have flexibility and where we don't. Employee benefit costs increased 15%, which accounts for 5.4% of this year's budget increase. Mortgage checks revenues is a source that varies wildly from year to year. In 2024, we budgeted $315,000. But so far this year, we're on trend to receive about $178,000, which is what I've used for the mortgage checks revenue. So that's a 1.2% increase in the budget for the loss of that revenue source. Another area that has been cut is capital planning expenditures. Another area that has been cut is capital planning expenditures. There's only one item, a high water rescue vehicle being recommended included in the budget this year for consideration. And it is to be funded in part with a grant application that has been submitted. Most of last year's capital expenditures were funded out of federal ARPA funds from the pandemic and that level of spending can't be duplicated without increasing taxes further. Therefore, no additional recommendations need. A couple of big expenditures for 2025 are related to Suffolk County Health Department mandates related to our non-community public water systems across multiple town buildings. And then also the professional fees related to the comprehensive plan and its generic environmental impact statement. Both are added in for $100,000 and account for 0.85% budget increase each. The remaining increases are a debt by 1,000 cuts and too small to enumerate, but they do add up. Lastly, I added in the same draws from fund balance as were added in for 2024, which was $405,000 for the A Fund and $10,000 from the B Fund. So this year's increase can be plainly compared to last year's budget. Upon early review, these draws to offset tax revenues can be supported by the current fund balances that we have. In summary, the 2024 final budget taxes increased 6.3%. This 2025 tentative budget reflects a 10.2% increase. This is not a number I wish to put on the taxpayers. So this is the beginning of the process for the town board. There are some figures that need refining, but a lot of thought has gone into the process so far. It stated the beginning of my comments, this, there's clearly more work to be done and some tough decisions that we as a board are going to have to make. That's my not so good news for today. We have set up a number of dates in which to start working on the budget. The first is going to be Monday. It will give you the rest of the week to start to dive into the numbers, ask questions. We will start to invite in department heads and committee chairs. And I'm sure some of them, I'm going to ask Shelby today to, now that we finalized the budget, the tentative budget yesterday, to recirculate to all of the department heads and committee chairs where their budgets landed. I can say no one is going to be happy because I cut everywhere. So we're going to get a lot of people coming in, trying to make their case for why things need to stay as they were last year or to implement new programs, staffing positions, et cetera, that they have wanted to see added this year. As well as a few salary increases from some people who want to try and get themselves on par with other people within the organization who are on the same level, in the work levels and, you know, underneath department heads, things like that. So they will start to fill in this calendar, but also if you have somebody in particular that you would like to have come in and give a presentation to explain what their department does or support their, you know, their request. Budget meetings will be Monday, Monday morning. So all of these times are going to be nine to noon in the morning and then afternoon sessions will be one to 4:00 PM. So Monday in the morning, Thursday, the 10th in the afternoon. Friday will be an all-day affair with a morning session and an afternoon session. The following Friday, we'll do the same, morning and afternoon sessions. And then Tuesday, ahead of our work session, we'll also be in another budget workshop in the morning. And then our last one, if it's still needed, on the 24th will be a morning session. And then the following day, Friday, the 25th, is when we need to send a notice to a reporter to set the public hearing for November 7th. So that is our budget calendar state of affairs.
Amber, can I ask you a question? The, the last paragraph there for 2020, $405,000 from the A Fund, $10,000 from the B Fund. What was that for? Can I get a listing of what that was for, the expenditures?
What that is, is instead of raising taxes, say in the A Fund, $405,000, we do have money in fund balance and I am updating that spreadsheet. So I've got some information that came from the outside accountants to look at just finalizing the 2023 audited financial statements. So once I've had a chance to pull that together, there should be adequate funds there so that we can pull $405,000 out of fund balance reserves and save the taxpayers from having to pay that. And so it draws down on our reserves, but I think we're still ample reserve money in case we have some sort of catastrophe hit and need to, you know, like a storm comes through and we have to replace a building and it's not covered by insurance, things like that.
The expenditures from last, from last year, that.
Those, that was not based on expenditures. That was just a budget offset to lower taxes. So it's not any one thing. If you look at the cover sheet, which is the first page in the budget book, you'll see that the fund balance pull is greater than that. It's actually $527,000. And I was going to go over this when I go through my spreadsheet, but since you're asking, there's $67,000 that we pull, we have cell tower reserve money, that when we sold the cell, cell tower a number of years ago, at the time, we were taking the money that we received in fees paid for the carriers on the cell tower. We were taking half that money and offsetting taxpayer, you know, money as well as half of it was going into capital projects. So that we set aside at the time, I think it was like 1.2 million. So every year we draw down on $67,000 just as an offset to increasing taxes to sort of keep the status quo. Green Options received a grant a number of years ago, $5,000. So as they expend money, we reduce that balance of 5,000. So they, this year we're projecting they have $2,748 left. So that money, since it's in their budget for 2024, but will be unspent, it goes back into fund balance. So then we pull it out of fund balance and give it to them for possible expenditures. Same thing with the Waterman program. That was a grant that was received for the youth center to run a water-focused program for youth. That money was not spent any year that it came in. So it, since it was unspent, that balance of money goes back into fund balance. So we pull it back out and put it back on expenditure list for the current year. The $405,000 is just a pull. So, and then the last one is jetties and bulkheads and town landing. Ken has said that he is not going to use, I think it's 20,000 for jetties and bulkheads. So he's not going to spend it this year. So that money will, and he doesn't have a project to encumber at this point. So that money too will roll back into fund balance. So he's increasing jetties and bulkheads from 20,000 to 40,000 this year, knowing that 20,000 is coming back out of fund balance.
All right, so the order report we're going to have.
Yes.
Should, before?
Yes. Yeah, I'm going to finish it now. Since we're not doing any budget meetings this week and I don't have to work on the budget this week, I can go through. There was at least one like glaring error that I found in formatting that just wasn't making sense. And then a couple of other nits and that. So. And also we're waiting for the contract accountants. They haven't given their comments yet to the editors either. So I think we're both going to shoot to have that done by the end of this week so we can have that report next week. Sounds good. That was it for the special meeting. So I've entered a motion to close this. No, I guess it's actually to adjourn these special meetings because we will reconvene on Monday at 9:00 for budget purposes.
Make motion.
Okay. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. We are now going to go into, we're going back into the work session. We will close the work session so that we can go into executive session to review the employment history of employees.
Make motion.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.